Business meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Yes, Basine here. Camson here. Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Smith. Smith's here. We're doing both.
Roll call.
Okay, and Martin.
Yeah. Okay, um, we can get started with our pledge of allegiance. Who will be leading us with the pledge allegiance? Will that be Ms. Simpson? Or Ms. Burris?
I think Ms. Burris is going to.
Okay, Ms. Burris, please lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Dr. Sharon Birdsong, Board Members and our viewers. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burris. Okay, next on our item, on our agenda, we have our student musical performance. Ms. Rowby, could you please give the introduction?
Yes, I'm very delighted. Good evening, School Board Members, Dr. Birdsong and her administrative staff. Delighted to share with you an elementary presentation this evening. We have the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. Their music teacher, Ms. Erin Wilbright, did a very special project with third graders, recording themselves, performing sign language. And I'm not going to say the title or anything like that because you're definitely going to get the message. And we hope it puts a little bit of joy in your heart. It certainly did for the children. So enjoy.
Absolutely adorable. Ms. Wilbright, would you mind saying a few words about the choice of the song and maybe how you coordinated all of that?
So our, whoopsie. Sorry, I'm on my tablet. Computer died. It is, I found this song. It's in a wonderful compilation called Music K8. And I thought, right now, with everything going on, it was a really good idea to just say, you know, it's time to just kind of spread a little joy and, and just be a good person. And the kids, it was time for the kids to just perform again. And I thought we could perform together. And it was a fun little project for them to perform together. And we put it on the ADL Facebook page. And the response was just amazing. The parents were like, oh, this put a smile on my face. This just put a warm feeling in my heart. And it's exactly the meaning or the purpose for this project. It was just to make everybody feel good and for the kids to get out there and see each other, and the parents to see the kids again, even though we're virtual.
Well, it definitely gave a feel-good start to our meeting this evening, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you're doing for our children and bringing, I love when you bring the expression of sign language to song. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, um, next we have our second superintendent. Dr. Birdsong, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the School Board and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few updates with you this evening. As of last week, we have welcomed back our Phase 1 students for in-person learning in our schools. That is, our pre-kindergarten through fifth grade students, our English language learners, and our students with disabilities, to include those in self-contained settings, K-12, as well as students in Phase 2, our middle school students in grades 6 through 8. Making my rounds across the school division to visit classrooms and seeing their smiling faces, just seeing the amazing work that the teachers and students do, what they're doing, even as they're smiling behind their mask. It's truly been such a rewarding experience for me. I've been completely overwhelmed to witness firsthand just how well our students, our teachers and staff have continued to adapt and adjust to our new learning environments after being physically out of our classrooms for almost a year. It's truly been a collaborative effort. Again, I would like to thank our building-level administrators, teachers, staff, central office administrators, students, and families for their continued flexibility and support during this time. Providing excellence and equitable educational opportunities for all of our students remains to be a collaborative effort as we close out this school year. And now we'll move on to introduce this month's superintendent's video report, where you will see updates on some of the great things that are occurring across the school division. The video begins with a brief look at the in-person instructional experiences of our students, teachers, and staff at Norview and Northside Middle Schools, under the strong leadership of Brandy Schmedley and Letitia Lawrence, respectively. Next, we'll hear from Fairlon Elementary School's media specialist, Linda McIntyre, regarding the importance of keeping literacy as a top priority with our young readers while navigating the hybrid learning environment, as we recognize April as National Library Month, as you well know, Dr. Martin. Then we'll take a look at a visit at Ingleside Elementary School, conducted by the 2021 Virginia Teacher of the Year and appointed member of the Virginia Board of Education, Anthony Swan, who currently serves as a fifth-grade teacher at Rocky Mount Elementary School in Franklin County. Finally, we will get a play-by-play of the fall athletic season that had at last taken place after having to be rescheduled due to COVID-19. And with that, let's go ahead and roll the video.
Middle school students returned to their buildings in mid-April after learning virtually at home for over a year. At Norview Middle, students arrived to a very organized and safe school campus. Although this first week felt like it was the start of the school year, students and staff quickly adjusted to the new routine and enjoyed seeing one another.
Well, you know, we kind of treat this as that first-day school, you know, September, you get to, they're getting to feel each other out and getting to know us. So I feel like we're getting to see the silence of the students right now. They're kind of quiet. And they seem a little nervous at times, but a lot of them are so excited.
I'm so happy to have the kids back in the classroom. I've been waiting so long to see them. I've been telling them for months, I'm so excited to meet you in person and give you little elbow bumps and say hi. And so just leading up to them coming back to the classroom, I was so excited. I was so ready to like make my room all nice for them and see them in person. It's just so much nicer and easier when you have that face-to-face communication with the kids. And you really get to know their personalities a little bit more when you're face-to-face versus on the computer.
Over at Northside Middle, everyone was also thrilled to have students back. Like Norview, many things in the building have changed to keep students and staff safe, but it hasn't hindered anyone's delight at seeing young people in the school again.
It's been very exciting. I think there was some reluctance or nervousness, but once the students got in and they saw there were routines and procedures in place, and they got to see a friend to whom they haven't been able to see in person for some time. I think that they are excited. I know that our teachers are excited because the unknown was a factor that made everyone a little uncomfortable. But once you get in and you have procedures in place, I think that we are excited. I know that we are excited.
It's been great, actually. I had a little bit of anxiety trying to do concurrent teaching, but actually having them in the classroom, it's actually a joy. Like, I feel myself smiling behind my mask sometimes, like, okay, you guys. Actually having feedback from the kids, being in the seats and raising their hands and like, oh, the answer, like, oh, yes, yes, yes. So I get excited more.
It's a lot more fun. Like, the reason I became a teacher is I really enjoy being around the middle-school-aged kids. So when they're in the classroom, it's just a lot more lively. It gets really old really fast when you're sitting there teaching on Zoom and no one's talking to you. But when they're in the class, they kind of have no choice but to talk to you. And they get really excited and they're really happy, and that makes me really happy.
April is School Library Month, and among our district's awesome media specialists is Linda McIntyre at Fairlon Elementary. As a media specialist at Norfolk's only K-2 school, Ms. McIntyre's primary goal is to teach our youngest learners to love reading, even in a virtual environment.
It's been a learning process. You know, it's just been so much new things to do, learn about, and to figure out how to do things virtually that we never did before. Trying to figure out how to get books in kids' hands and teach them how to read in a virtual environment is really challenging. I have classes all morning long. And that will either be virtually, if the kids are still all virtual, or it will be in the classroom, if they're, you know, a hybrid, you know, learning environment. In the afternoons, I check out books to the children, and I also do small-group reading instruction.
Ms. McIntyre is an outstanding media specialist, and her aim is to make sure boys and girls have books in their hands so that they can read. During the pandemic, she would come out on Tuesdays and Thursdays to pass out books to parents. Now that we're back in school, she continues to do virtual and in-person teaching with the boys and girls. And she has a time that they can check out books. She has set up a system where they'll have their own little book bags with their names on it, and they will check out their books, and they'll put them in the bag. And then she would tell them when the return date is, and the boys and girls are able to check out their own books.
I love being a media specialist because I love getting books into kids' hands and watching their eyes light up when they are enjoying a story.
I've had a lot of outstanding media specialists, but Ms. McIntyre is very talented. She supports the students, the parents, and the teachers. She goes over and beyond her duties.
I used to be a third-grade teacher, and I loved being a third-grade teacher. But I grew up loving reading and loving, and I think that's what made me a good reader. And I want the kids to love reading. And so I chose to be a media specialist so that I could engage with more kids and teach them to love to read.
Anthony Swan, the 2021 Virginia Teacher of the Year, stopped by Ingleside Elementary to deliver a special message of hope to teachers and take a brief tour around the building. He did, however, spend most of his visit speaking to a group of African-American male teachers at the school about the importance of building relationships with students and encouraged them to continue making a difference in young people's lives.
His overarching message was basically to work on building relationships with those students, get to know those students, do different things, different methods, to get to understand them. But most importantly is to build those relationships. Once you build those relationships, it'll foster the students to want to learn and be more effective in what they do on a daily basis.
I want to give them the message of thank you, basically, and let them know just how powerful they are as educators, because it was an educator who changed my life. And so wanting the teachers to feel a sense of hope, like, okay, I can do this. It's okay, because I'm going to be someone's lifesaver, and they need me. And so my message to the teachers is, please continue to keep going. We need you in education.
A season unlike any other came to an end as Norfolk Public Schools completed their fall regular season in athletics. Thanks to mitigation strategies, hard work, and discipline by all involved, our student athletes were able to compete in an abbreviated district schedule.
The review for fall athletics can be deemed a success with the number of opportunities that we were able to provide for our student athletes and coaches. We set out a goal of a season, and we were able to accomplish most of those games that were scheduled.
Over 80% of the football games were played, while field hockey came in at 78%. All volleyball matches and cross-country meets were played as scheduled.
In order to have this successful season, it took collaboration from every entity involved in the school system, from the administration from the top, supporting, and then having our principals, having our athletic directors and our athletic trainers, and our coaches buy into the mitigation strategies because they were different and difficult. But they were able to buy in, become one team, per se, to create success. And very proud of that.
I hope that you all enjoyed the video. Before I close, I want to recognize our illustrious administrative professionals. Today, we celebrated Administrative Professionals Day here in Norfolk Public Schools. And we definitely could not do the work that we do with our children without them. So again, I just wanted to highlight that. In addition, we have been celebrating the Month of a Military Child. And I see that many board members and staff have rippled up today. And Ms. Tanner will be sharing a resolution around that before we close out our meeting this evening. So thank you, Madam Chair, Martin. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Okay, Ms. Tanner, could you go ahead with the clerk's report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the observances are listed on Board Docs for April. But we do have, as Dr. Birdsong spoke of, the Month of Military Child proclamation. And then for the month of May, we're going to celebrate the National Physical Fitness and Sports Month, Teacher Appreciation Week, May 3rd through the 7th, Teacher Appreciation Day, May 4th, and National School Nurse Day on May 12th. And this concludes our observances for the month of May and April. Okay, Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers to join our Zoom webinar to provide public comments on the agenda or non-agenda items. But we do have one public comment posted to Board Docs for Policy JM from S. Martin that's posted on Board Docs for today.
Ms. Tanner, just for clarification, is it JMZ?
JMZ, yes.
Okay. It's available on Board Docs. Okay. All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I think Ms. Tanner's seconded.
Okay.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine. Camson.
Ms. Camson. Hello, sorry. Hi.
Okay. Clanton.
Hi.
Gabriel.
Hi.
Jordan.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi. Thank you. And next on the agenda, we have the monthly financial report, and it's 6.01. Mr. Jenkins, may I be providing that? Thank you.
Just need to move the mic.
Can you hear him now?
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's start again. Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, and Dr. Birdsong, and also members of the board. I'll review the March financial reports with you. During the first nine months of the year, we collected $227 million of our general fund revenue. This was 67.4% of the budget. For the same nine months, in the previous two years, we collected 67% in fiscal 2020 and 72% in 2019. So we're similar to fiscal 2020, a bit behind 19. On page three of the highlights, we see revenue and spending to date. Through March, we'd spent or encumbered $217.4 million, or 64.5% of our budget. Again, revenues to date were $227.3 million. During the previous two years, spending for the first nine months was 65.1% of the budget. And during fiscal 19, it was 69.8% of the budget. That indicates that spending is slightly trailing the previous two years. On page four, there are two graphs, one of revenue and the other of spending for each month of the year. The graphs display the current data in the red columns through the month of March. We included monthly comparisons in the previous two, for the previous two years, in blue and orange. The monthly budget appears in the background. The screen. Starting on page five, there's more information in greater detail for you. I'd like to also point out, on page 15 to 17, is the quarterly grant report. The status of the pandemic-related federal grants appear at the top of page 15. You will note that we've spent the entire $4.8 million of the coronavirus relief fund that was awarded in October. We have spent 62% of the original CARES grant that was awarded last spring. And we expect to spend the remainder of the original CARES grant in the coming months. We have not included the latest approved grant under the American Recovery Act as we're still awaiting directions from the Virginia Department of Education. There were no budget transfers exceeding $50,000 during the month of March. And Dr. Martin, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jenkins? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, so.
Do you want me to move to accept the financial report as presented?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we accept the financial report as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
Basine.
Hi.
Camson. Camson.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Clanton.
Hi.
Gabriel.
Hi.
Jordan.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
And Martin.
Hi. Okay, so did I hear that there was a resolution to be read and submitted on? Earlier? Did I hear that correctly? Proclamation? Okay, it wasn't listed here, so I skipped right over it. All right, okay, so did you need to read that? So that's been... Okay. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is matters of the board. And first up, Ms. Simpson. Do you have, as our student representative, do you have anything to speak to this evening?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Martin, and good evening to our viewers and members of the School Board. I'm happy to report that our final phase of high school students are eagerly awaiting a safe return to schools in the coming week. Despite the many challenges accompanying distance learning, this year, students have proven their resiliency in the first three quarters of the school year and plan to continue on this upward trajectory through the last nine weeks of school. Just as administration has worked tirelessly to keep students and teachers safe in schools, students have worked toward this return, finally able to feel the excitements of meeting their teachers face-to-face, interacting with classmates, and for some, being inside their school building for the very first time. Such developments have fostered positivity throughout the district and have inspired students, teachers, parents, and administrators to persevere through the new normals of this 2020 to 2021 school year. Once again, we would like to thank everyone who has played a role in creating a safe and supportive environment in which we return to schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Do you mind if I ask you, what are you most looking forward to when you return to the classroom?
Yeah, I kind of hit on it a little bit, but I'm excited to meet my teachers. It's definitely strange that a couple of them, I've never even seen inside the school building. And I'm just like anxious to get a feel for their teaching face-to-face and just meet them and start creating those personal relationships that can be made in person rather than, you know, behind a screen. And I'm excited to see my classmates, too.
Great. Ms. Burris, would you mind sharing with us what you're most looking forward to as you return to the classroom?
Personally, I'm most looking forward to seeing all the people that I haven't, like, seen in over a year and just actually be face-to-face with people and talk, you know, not through Zoom.
Is there anything you're going to miss from the distance learning?
Sleeping in.
Ms. Simpson, do you have anything that you're going to miss?
Um, I think some scheduling things have been a lot more convenient over Zoom. I'm still at home for this meeting, too, and it's definitely easier to hop on my computer rather than getting in my car. But I think overall, the benefits of getting to see my teachers and friends in school will outweigh the early morning and the transition time, so I'm excited.
Well, I hope you both make the most of that, what is it, almost seven weeks that you'll be spending in the schools and before graduation. And, you know, I just hope you reflect on this time in a positive way and very much a growing opportunity, a learning opportunity, as you move on to your next phase. So we're so happy, really happy to have you to provide this kind of perspective from our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the floor for board reports. Ms. Camson, and then Dr. Gabriel, did I see your hand? Okay.
And I could have raised my hand at the wrong time. I had something I wanted to get some information on. It's not a committee report, so should I wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Sure. And good evening, everyone. The Norfolk Council PTA finished strong this year, albeit virtual. And they will be advertising spots for their new leadership, for slots of, of course, anyone interested in president or vice president or serving on the board. They have different committee chairs. And so if you are interested in serving the Norfolk Council of PTA, which is the group of the entire school division PTA representatives that represent us at the state level and advocate us even on the local level, we would definitely appreciate your interest and thought in joining this team of dedicated volunteers. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'll give you an update regarding the Governor's School for the Arts Board. I'll give you an update regarding the Governor's School for the Arts Board. As you know, I'm serving as chairman, but as a member of the board representing Norfolk, we, two things. One, we are getting a state evaluation, which happens ever so often, and on Monday, members of the, the board spoke with members across from other governor schools to talk about our, our equity, our university type initiatives and the things that we're doing to diversify the population and getting more student enrollment. Also, as a part of that, as you all know, we are also seeking a, a new executive director and the board will have a special call meeting, will meet to discuss who that potential candidate will be. But great things are happening at the Governor's School and a lot of great Norfolk Public Schools students are participating.
Thank you for that, thank you for that update, Mr. Clayton. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Campson, go ahead.
All right, and I don't want to take a lot of time, just I'm interested in knowing, well, we haven't heard any report yet on Fairlawn and I was concerned that that building may be sitting there empty next year. At one time, we were considering the movement of Easton there, so Easton is a building in very poor condition that would be able to be, and they should only be able to move into a building that's much, much better. And it, it would seem that would be better to have something in Fairlawn and I know it was also considered for pre-K center. Where are we with that? And I mean, I know you can't answer now, but could we get that on the agenda pretty quick? Because time's gone and we've been kind of waiting and it hasn't come up on the agenda since we talked about it a few months ago.
Okay, I made a note of that. Thanks, Ms. Campson.
Thank you.
Dr. Gab, I'm sorry, let's go to Ms. Smith and then Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you. As mentioned previously, I'm just bringing it out, in this meeting, I'd like for us to put on the agenda or include on the agenda a discussion about teacher turnover and the impact that it potentially has on student instruction and what our strategies are to mitigate that.
I've noted that, so thank you. So, Dr. Gabriel and then Ms. Bassine.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I, I enjoyed our governance training earlier today and I would ask Dr. Martin, as you and Dr. Birdsong and Mr. Jordan speak with our trainers, if possible, and this would be up to the, the, the board, if they would be willing to, to do this, as we're trying to schedule our dates for the community listening sessions, would it be possible to maybe give us the entire month of May to schedule these meetings? I, I just noticed that we're, we're all trying to schedule them, but it might be helpful if we're really trying to get as many people as possible to complete this project. So just something for you to consider with them as you're meeting. I would appreciate that i- if that is the will of the board, if, if they are, accept that suggestion.
What I'd like to do is talk to AJ and Cindy and find out how that would impact our timeline.
Okay, and I'm looking at the...
We don't, we don't want to be, fall behind and so, but I, I have noted your suggestion and we'll discuss it, so thank you. Ms. Bassine, go ahead.
Thank you. I also, just to piggyback a little bit on that, can you, is it possible, you don't have to do it right now, but if we could get a summary of the dates, I just want to be clear, like if we could get all the dates for our meetings through the summer, including our, our board retreat, governance training and all of that included, as soon as possible, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to give as much time as possible for everyone to make accommodations for the governance training and the retreats. We did talk about holding July 7th through the 9th for our organizational meeting and retreat, but a lot of, so essentially, we're, we're, we have a time set up tomorrow to talk to AJ and Cindy, I talked about that earlier because we want to plan from May. And then moving forward, right now, we're planning that they will attend our agenda planning sessions and then go there. So we, we're trying to plan those out, the governance training out a month ahead of time. And in where possible, try to plan out even further. I think because we're just getting started with this, and you know, we're having a really good discussion, if we, if we can stay on task, we won't, you know, but while, you know, focus on staying on task and accomplishing what's on the agenda for that day as much as possible so that we don't get backed up. Because I mean, I think we can all agree, this is a lot, you know, it's very different, it's very involved. And so if we, you know, the better we do it staying on that schedule, the more I think that we can build that, build out the schedule moving forward. So that's kind of the place we're in right now, but we're definitely trying to do that.
Okay, all right, great.
I'm, I'm, I'll know more, more tomorrow.
Okay, great. And then, and I'm sorry if I missed this somewhere, but just a couple of things that I'm sure you have already noted or the administration already has plans to do this, but I imagine we'll get a graduation update and I see Dr. Birdsong shaking her head, so yes, that's, okay, so. And the other thing, we talked about with AJ and Cindy, we, we agreed to stick to the timeline that was originally presented, which means that we should be having discussion around what sorts of data analysis or needs assessment that we're going to do. And that I imagine is something that you all will talk about in your agenda planning or governance training planning with AJ and Cindy, is that correct?
Whatever's listed, those topics that are listed on the timeline, I don't have it in front of me, but whenever it, it's, we, we voted on that timeline, so wherever that is listed, that's when we, if we, again, staying on track, that's when we should discuss them. And I think what we're probably, it's, it's, it was my impression that we'd be discussing that as a board, it wouldn't be just a, an agenda planning decision. Am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, well, I guess I, I wasn't, I don't know exactly what, if this was planned with them today for the board to, to discuss and, and I should have been clear, I mean, for you all to talk about an agenda planning on when to have that discussion with the board in, in regards to what kind of data we, we want to examine. And so I was wondering when we might have that discussion about what, what data we want to examine and when we might be examining it, if that makes sense, per, per the timeline that, that was provided.
I have the timeline in front of me and the timeline says that the data is supposed to be provided by May 5th.
Right.
Right.
Ms. Campson, Mr. Jordan was going to offer some explanation.
Yeah, so Ms. Campson is correct, so May 5th is when we're to receive the initial needs assessment from Dr. Birdsong and then at, at time, we will have an opportunity to say if there's anything more we would like to see, but that's supposed to take place on, at the work session on May 5th.
Okay, great. So I, I saw that on the timeline, I just wasn't sure whether we were going to be informing that needs assessment and so I just wanted to get clarity on that.
No, I, I inquired about it and, and I'm, that's the answer that I, that I received because I've had the same question.
Okay.
And so the, the intent is to allow the superintendent to do that initial cut, if you will, and then we would agree as a board if we think that there's more to it, but I will say that based upon the response that I got, I don't, I don't want the board to expect some encyclopedia. So as they described it, it's maybe one to three pages of, of focus, high needs assessments and summary as determined by the administration. And then if there's more that we feel that we need, we would discuss that then, but this, this needs assessment might be about three pages, it won't be as maybe...
Like a binder?
In some ways that we're used to, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
No dissertations. Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
It, it may be somewhat of a binder. Because we too tried to get some clarification on what the expectations are, you know, in, with the Council of Great Cities works, the Council of Great City Schools work with other school divisions and so we're going to give you a lot of data and hopefully it's what you are expecting.
Okay.
Because it wasn't really clarified.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clayton?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Just quickly, are we preparing and also building in for you all for agenda planning? Councils, I do not think, will approve their budget on May, May 5th, I think it's on that time.
The 11th?
The 11th. And just for us to be prepared, if, even if we don't need it, so that if we have to make any potential adjustments, that we have that built in to our schedule and so we don't have to have any special meetings, I guess, but if you can build it up ahead of time. The other item is I will be bringing forth to the board for the month of June. As you all remember, with the passing of Lucy Deleski, our, one of our dear teachers here, bringing forth the resolution, working with Dr. Gabriel on that, to the, for the board for consideration in the month of June. And just to kind of give an idea of, and I will share it in there, we're thinking, because she is the longest-serving teacher, that it would be nice to potentially name the Teacher of the Year award in her honor as a part of the resolution. So just to kind of give you all a brief of that and bring it forth to you in June for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clayton. Anyone else? Okay. All right. All right, um, with that, I will say we are adjourned and wish...
Hold on, what, we, we did it. I just want to say, tell AJ you did it one hour.
We voted on the consent agenda. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I was just saying you got done in an hour.
We did it.
Can be done.
Okay, meeting adjourned.